Live from the city council chambers here in Holyoke, Massachusetts. And I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley? Devine?
She's here.
Givner?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And all its people. City Council.
Great. We're also being recorded right now. We are live streamed on the city's website and also on the public access station, and it's also being translated. Councillors, if you haven't already, please sign the orders from they're being released. And we are gonna pick a name. Who went first last time? I kind of... Oh, Juan did. I kind of blacked out all that meeting, so. Yeah. Councillor Bacon will be going first tonight for our votes. Public comment?
More than ever before.
Anyone signed up for him? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
I guess it depends on the night.
Madam President?
Yes.
If it's, if now is appropriate, we should probably maybe consider a moment of silence. We lost a couple.
Absolutely. So. A few notes. Unfortunately, a lot of really great members of our community, great Hoyokers. So I've been asked to give a moment of silence for Barbara Bernard, Mike Mannix, longtime city, or Board of Alderman, President, and Jack McCarthy. So that, unless there's anyone else that would like to be added of a moment of silence. Thank you. With that, go to public comment. It's somewhere. All right. Fun fact before we get into the public comment. I got a digital clock, everyone. Yes, but I don't. Don't clap too hard. There's no batteries in this, so we're gonna use it at the next meeting. And I am going to time. You have two minutes. Just state your name and your address for the public record, and I will awkwardly interrupt you at about 30 seconds to let you know that you have 30 seconds left. So, okay? But next meeting, it's happening. It's gonna be great. Okay, hold on. Okay, whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Peterson. I'm a resident of Holyoke.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Make sure that.
There we go. Testing?
Yes, there you go.
Start again?
Yeah.
My name is Lindsay Peterson, resident of 247 Walnut Street here in Holyoke. I, dear councillors, I implore you to stop the development of the USA International Sports Complex in our city. The project is a short-sighted, backward-looking, environmentally unsound, and fiscally irresponsible approach to development in the city of Holyoke. Included in this development project proposal is an 11-acre parcel of largely-forested land on Whiting Farms Road. There is no reason that 11 acres of forested land in our city should be cleared to make way for an out-of-date mall-style development. We are a city with consistent issues with our combined sewer overflow during heavy rainfall. A component of management of CSO overflow is environmental planning. Trees provide an essential part of that. We do not need any more impervious surfaces in the greater downtown area. The more impervious surfaces, the more water runoff into our CSO system, the more sewage in the river. What good is a city with a sports complex and sewage in the water? The Kmart Plaza stands as an ugly witness to this kind of short-sighted development. The USA International Sports Complex should be developed, if anywhere, at the site of the Kmart Plaza. Additionally, Cesar Ruiz, leader of the USA International Sports Complex Group, is a fiscal risk. As documented recently, he violated state campaign finance laws with his Hispanic Latino Leaders Now Political Action Committee.
30 seconds.
A clean river, new green industrial development, creative and impactful schooling, a redeveloped downtown. These are well-grounded investments in our city. A 140,000-square-foot indoor or outdoor both-sport center, developed partially on forested land and dependent on car transportation, is not. I urge you to protect the future of Holyoke, its residents, and businesses.
Perfect. That was two minutes exactly. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any hands on the Zoom. Anyone else in the public here for public comment? Great. Thank you very much, everyone.
I'll make a motion to take one off the table.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item one off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so item one is from Mayor Joshua Garcia. It's the veto of the two-third-majority vote ordinance. And I'll just read the order. Ordered the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred in order, that an ordinance be established to address the two-thirds majority vote of the body for votes.
I'll make a motion to override the veto.
Second.
Motion has been made to override the veto, made and seconded to override the veto. Is there any discussion? Councillor Jordane and then Councillor Devine?
I just wanted to add a few different points. One, fortunately, I know it was tough with the summer meeting. We didn't have our full complement of members at the last meeting, but today we do, which is really helpful. I did want to just remind everybody that this was after a year of work. This was a compromise on a proposal that was put forward by our former council president, Todd McGee. It was recommended from the Law Department that if we wanted to codify this rule, to put it into an ordinance. This rule has been on the books for quite a number of years. That fact that essentially that if you have to adopt an ordinance, you need to have a two-thirds approval of the council. I'm gonna get into quickly why, why that is. But essentially, our, not essentially, word for word, our current rule states that it's of the entire body. So this became the discussion. Is it two-thirds of the entire body? Or is it two-thirds of just who happens to show up at that particular meeting? And so a debate went forward, and it was suggested that this council come up with a resolution of that matter. After a year of discussion, numerous people had a strong opinions on it, and we ultimately compromised with the lower standard, which is, quite frankly, what a number of people on the council wanted. The current rule says it's of the entire 13 members. The reason that was written into the rules was so that, one, if someone did have a conflict of interest, you weren't rewarded by lowering the threshold by people not voting. And number two, it also encouraged everyone to show up for the vote. Because if people don't show up, then as the numbers go down, theoretically, you only need seven for quorum, something could theoretically pass five to two. So the council did not want to do that, so this is why they had that rule. Nevertheless, a number of people felt very strongly it should be just of those who show up. So even though I was for the other way, I compromised, along with a number of others, and we voted to this lesser standard. I thought the ordinance committee did a great job. They went through it, did a lot of work, and we came out with a compromise. And this full council embraced that vote 11 to 2. Great, okay. So unfortunately, along the way, the mayor vetoed it. And now it comes back to us to now override the veto. We only need nine votes. We had 11 votes in favor of this compromise. And this is an example where 11 of us worked together to come to a compromise, and I hope we are gonna stick with our votes. The reason that we don't want to have the mayor involved in this discussion, basically interfering with this veto now, is for exactly why we have this rule in the first place. If we don't have this rule, the mayor basically gets this new structure, which is if he's in favor of something, it only passes with a majority vote. But if he's against it, he vetoes it, and now you need a two-thirds vote. So all this discussion about, oh, well, you know, it's best to have a majority, and this is what some people are saying. Well, yeah, that's if the mayor supports it. But the council didn't want to do that. We wanted this rule for a lot of reasons. Number one, broad consensus that we work towards compromise on important issues that certain, we don't pass tons of ordinances, but when we do, we want it to be with a broad consensus of the whole body. Second point is that we didn't want to create this past scenario or potential scenario where if the mayor's in favor of it, it's majority, and if he's against, it's two-thirds. We said two-thirds all the time. So I would encourage councillors, let's show that we can compromise on things, that we can work together to come to a common solution. We put this work in for a year, and I would ask the 11 councillors that voted for this previously to stick to your vote, and please vote in favor of this. And this is good government. This is how it's supposed to work, and it maintains checks and balances and protects the council's authority, which we have had for a long time. Okay, so I would encourage the council to vote to override. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Devine?
Yeah, this is just for clarification purposes only. Councillor Jordane says the rule, I believe it should be the ordinance. You mentioned the rule says.
Currently, there's in the rules.
In the city council rules or ordinance?
Currently, it's a city council rule, but the recommendation was to make it an ordinance, too. So this would make it an ordinance.
Okay, and that would be two-thirds, instead of saying of those that show up, two-thirds of those present?
Just present.
And does that also include those on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Anyone else? All right, on the motion. If you vote yes, you are voting to overturn the mayor's veto. Okay? The clerk will call the roll.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eight a's, five nays.
Okay, so that needed nine?
Motion to reconsider our action and lay on the table. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to lay the item on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, reconsider our action and lay it.
Reconsider our action.
And lay it on the table.
And lay it on the table. I was just repeating what was said.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, the item will lay on the table. Item number two, from Mayor Joshua Garcia.
Be received.
This is communication on paving schedule, on the paving schedule for city roads. Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Item number three is from the mayor. It is a reappointment of Joseph Charles Metzola of 332 Pleasant Street to serve on the local Historic Commission. He will serve a three-year term expiring October 1st, 2027.
Make a motion to confirm the reappointment?
Motion's been made and seconded to confirm the reappointment. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number four is from the mayor. It's the appointment of various individuals to serve on the parking advisory board.
Madam President, I guess I have to abstain.
So does councillor Rivera, I guess. No, this is.
I just saw that.
For all the debates.
That's funny. Councillor Rivera, you gotta abstain, too.
The president recommends, but the mayor chooses. That's my understanding. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That passes. Item number five is a communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jane Mantalowski. It's a legal opinion on Rule 9P.
Motion to receive and change the rule.
Say, receive and send to Charter and Rules? Isn't the rule?
I was gonna say, I think we already changed the, did we change it? And then we just requested, or were we waiting? Sorry.
What's the status?
Is it already in Charter and Rules?
It's in Charter and Rules. Because we have another.
Okay, it's in Charter and Rules.
Okay.
Okay. So motion to receive and send.
Refer to Charter and Rules.
Refer to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item four, or nope, sorry, six, is from City Clerk Brendan Murphy Leary and Jeffrey Anderson Burgos from the August 6th meeting.
Be received.
Motion to receive. Are there any comments or corrections?
None.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item seven is from our administrative assistant, and it is the executive session minutes from February 6th, 2024. And gonna make sure the whole heading of this order must be. Order releasing minutes from February 6th, 2024, executive session meeting, which was held to discuss a pending MCAG complaint that these attached minutes from the executive session meeting are to be released in its redacted form as allowed by the Office of the Attorney General, thereby complying with the Order of the Attorney General in Open Meeting Law 2024-139.
Motion to receive and release the minutes?
Motion's been made and seconded to release the minutes under discussion. Councillor Bartley?
Could you help me out? Or Jeff could, maybe? Are they gonna be uploaded to the computer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bacon?
Can I also add that this might be a good time to make public the vote of the executive session?
So I was gonna do that in my president's report.
Okay.
If that works forever. Okay, cool. Thank you, though.
Sure.
Thank you. Councillor McGrath Smith?
Just a question for the public, where they could find these on the city website?
If you go to the city website and you go to the city council page, you can find the minutes. They, they aren't there right this second because, obviously, we're voting on that now. But Jeffrey will get them up, you know, as soon as possible this week. Okay? Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number eight is filed by councillor Jordane. Email regarding Fiesta Patronales invite.
Be received?
Received.
Motion to receive.
Under discussion.
Under discussion. Councillor Jordane?
Yeah, I need to clarify something up here that was recently, a number of councillors were put in a very false light by one of our members recently on social media regarding this invitation. So I want to clarify what happened here so that we're all on the same page, because apparently some people are saying some really negative things about the people in the room. So the first thing is, I received, Madam President, a very innocent, thoughtful email from you, and I thought it was very nice of you to do that. Unfortunately, it came very late prior to the event, but unfortunately, you just found out about this just moments, apparently, before this event. On August 3rd at 3:54 in the afternoon, that's approximately 27 hours before the proposed request, you sent everyone an email that says this follows. Hi, everyone, apologize for the last-minute weekend email. I'm currently on a plane waiting to return back from a work trip, and the mayor just texted me and asked if I could extend an invite to all councillors to join him on stage tomorrow at 7 o'clock at the Fiesta Patronales to extend greetings to the Salinas Mayor Carolyn Benia. And then you talk about how we're a sister, sister city. Feel free to text me with any questions, Tessa Murphy-Ronbeletti. No problem. I did not personally see this email until the next day at approximately 2 o'clock in the afternoon. That's me, Kevin. So now, what I find interesting is, I would have thought nothing of that further. I unfortunately was not able to go. I guess a number of councillors weren't also able to go because, you know, people have other plans. Things happen five hours before an event. You get an invitation, you look at it, you try to go, you either go or you can't go. That's fine enough. But there are individuals that are out there making accusations against members as a result of this invitation, saying that the full council was invited to attend and meet the mayor. Not only did they not show up, but they didn't even bother to respond. Completely ignored it. What a lack of, of respect. Councillors don't even bother to attend. We deserve better. Hoyoke deserves better. We see you. So apparently, for those of us that didn't go, we're put in this false light. And I just want, whenever I see untruths, whenever I see misleading statements, whenever I see attacks against colleagues on this body, the more these people tell mistruths, I will tell the truth in this room, and I will bring them each and every time forward, as I will do right now, okay? So we get invitations from the president or others to come to different events. We don't go around attacking each other, whether, because you don't know the circumstances around people. And the fact that we were told to the public, oh, you were invited to attend and meet the mayor, like we got the invitation a month earlier, and we just blew it up. I literally saw it hours before the event. So I want the good people of Hoyoke to know, when you see this type of divisive attacking commentary and these ad hominem attacks at the members of the body who don't show up, just remember the truth. You can see in the minutes, right here, the timestamp of when this invitation came from the president, and it's really disgraceful, the type of conduct that goes on around here, and it needs to stop. That's why yours truly filed a request that the members should stop attacking each other on social media. Just for the record, that vote failed 6 to 6, okay? But this is, once again, case study, state's evidence, one, about why that rule should be in effect. And just because that rule didn't pass doesn't mean you should go around attacking your fellow members over something you know, you know this isn't right, but you do it anyways. Have a good night.
Okay, so, thank you. Am I allowed to respond to that? Because it kind of felt like you were yelling at me.
Absolutely. Tessa Murphy-Ronbeletti not involved. Thank you very much for the input.
Okay, but, all right, I mean, okay, I'm gonna keep going.
Motion to receive.
Second.
Well, motion was, the motion on the floor was to receive the communication. What?
Point of order?
Yeah.
So, real quick, are we talking about a Facebook topic?
Yeah.
Yes.
That on the agenda? The Facebook post?
No, there was a Facebook statement by a member regarding this invitation.
By a council member or by a community member?
Council member.
All right, that got nothing to do with it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President, if it's okay, can we take nine and 10 as a package to spend the rolls?
Absolutely. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motions have been made and seconded to take items nine and 10 as a package. Nine is from city school committee member Gustavo Romero, letter of resignation. And 10 is from school committee member Dr. Gloria Caballero Raco, letter of resignation.
Be received.
Motion has been, motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President, can we take up items 11 and 12 together?
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded to take items 11 and 12 as a package. 11 is from the Hoyoke Retirement Board, the PARAC investment report for 2023. 12 is from the Hoyoke Retirement Board, the annual statement of the financial condition of the Hoyoke Retirement Board.
Be received and sent to Finance Committee.
Receive and send to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Item 13 be received?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, item 13, to receive item 13, which is from Carl Rossi, the DPW director, annual, nope, lied, letter to residents regarding alleyway trash pickup. Councillor Bartley?
No problem with the motion, but I just, we just clarify what ward that is. Is that seven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? So the motion was to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 14, from the interim city engineer.
Motion to receive and send to ordinance, please?
Yep, it's an update about Bray Park Drive. So motion was to receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 15 is from the Hoyoke Teachers Association, a letter regarding the process to hire superintendent.
Be received and sent to the joint school committee and city council.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer to the joint city council and school committee. All those in favor?
Just under discussion.
Oh, under discussion. Councillor Bartley?
Again, I have no problem with the, with the motion, but to send it to the, what are they supposed to do with the joint committee? Is, you got this letter, and who's having the impact on this decision-making? Is it the joint committee? Or is it the HPS School Board? Or is it the mayor? I wasn't clear on that. I was wondering if, you know, between now and the time it's taken up by Kevin.
Sure.
If you could just figure that out.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's addressed to the mayor and the school committee, so that's a great question.
Yeah, who makes the call on?
Right.
What they're asking. So that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President?
So moved, yeah. Councillor Devine?
Just a clarification to go back to the Bray Park Drive update.
Sure. Item 14.
And we have a letter from the, to the Public Safety Committee about these, so I'm wondering if we should send that to Public Safety, because it, the interim city engineer does not agree that it should be done.
And that's already in Public Safety, Bray Park Drive?
It seems that way, yeah.
Is that?
Okay, if that's where it is, I thought it was in ordinance, but if it's in Public Safety, that's okay.
Okay.
It says to Public Safety Committee.
I think. I'm fine with whatever the will of the body is. Councillor Bartley?
I'm fine with leaving it in ordinance, because they do pertain to ordinances and mostly, in order to meet them a little more regularly, and it affects the Ward 5 councillor's ward, so I would, I would think just leave it in ordinance. That'd be my take.
I think we should send it to Public Safety if it's in Public Safety.
And this was, this letter was addressed to Public Safety Committee.
That's a good point.
That's okay, I'll withdraw my motion and.
And we'll send to Public Safety? Okay. All those in favor to send to Public Safety instead of ordinance?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Up next, item 16.
And 17 be received?
16 and 17 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
16 is, 16 and 17 are from Stephen Superba. Both are emails. One is regarding the police chief's search, one is regarding the police department cash seizures. The motion was to receive.
17 go to Finance, no?
I might move.
There is an order that exists about police department cash seizures that councillor Rivera filed.
Is it in Finance?
I'm trying to remember where it is.
I don't, I don't remember.
Counselor Devine, it is in Finance?
We did take this, um, that order up in Finance, and it was referred to the interim chief right now. Uh, I did speak to him, and I also, during whatever Finance Committee meeting that was, I had conveyed to Counselor Israel Rivera that the former chief Pratt was going to put this all together, but he needed to do it after a fiscal year to get those five years. And so that was June 30th, and then, of course, we went on recess. So the order that's coming up should go to the acting chief. He's aware of it, and he'll take care of it.
And then, are you planning to, are you keeping it in the jacket in Finance? Okay, so we'll send, we'll receive item 16? And? Is that what you guys want? Receive item 16 and?
Just receive the, the order coming up will go to?
Okay, and send item 17 to Finance.
Right.
Everyone quote that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 18 is from the Office of Campaign and Political, uh, Political Finance Disposition Agreement. Would you like to send this to?
I don't know. Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I, I'd like to make a motion to receive it, but I just want to make a comment.
Sure, um, motion is to receive. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I, there's nothing this body can and should do with this specific contents, but I think it's important nevertheless to have this because, as you heard what the public speaker said, and we all know that this is a possibility, whether it's Wyco Park or whether it's Ward Three, it's, it's hard to know. But we should know with whom we're dealing, and maybe when this comes up, we'll, we'll get a better understanding as to what the, what the thinking was from the, uh, the petitioner, Cesar, and at, at, at that time. But I, I think it's just important just to have it on the public record, and that's it.
Great. All those in favor to receive?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item 19 is?
Madam President, can we take 19 and 20, please? As you spend the rolls as a package?
Second.
Yeah, because they're both meeting minutes?
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded to, um, take item 19 and 20 as a package and receive. Um, item 19 is minutes from the Board of Fire Commissioners from July 22nd, 2024, and 20 is from the Local Historic Commission, minutes from May 16th and June 13th meetings. Motion's to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 21 is from the city auditor, Tanya. Um, it's the sewer enterprise budget versus actual and general fund budget versus actual.
Receive.
Second.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Petitions. Uh, 22, item 22 is, um, the petition, geez, sorry. Petition from Francisco Martier, food vendor license application for 415 Main Street. DGR?
That is called DGR, bro.
Yes, they do.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to send to Development Government Relations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, President's Report. I have a couple of updates for you. First things first, um, we, I mentioned that we did have executive session prior to, um, this regular meeting of the full city council. And in that executive session, um, the body, uh, voted to approve the release of a handful of, uh, meeting minutes. Um, and I will state the dates of the meeting minutes that will be released. Um, that was February 6th, 2024, February 8th, 2021, October 18th, 2022, December 6th, 2022, redacted meeting minutes from November 1st, 2022, and December 5th, 2023, and then minutes of the August 25th, 2021 Public Safety Committee Executive Session. So just making that official for the record. Um, thank you. And let's see, okay, got all my updates for you. So, um, as a reminder, you are all invited to attend. Consider this an invite for me, uh, but also the mayor. Uh, the Springfield Puerto Rican Parade. Um, I'm getting there, getting there. Tranquil. September 15th, it's a Sunday. Um, it steps off at 11:00 a.m., um, at the, it's the intersection of Main and, and, uh, Was, Wa, Wason?
Wason.
Wason, sorry, I'm a Hoyoc girl. Um, and we're asked to be there by 10:30. The parade's about two miles. Some years it has been unbearably hot and not a lot of shade, so just remember that. There's also, like, not the greatest access to bathrooms. So, um, or food, you know, bring your water. But we love our friends in Springfield, and we're looking forward to it, and we're gonna have a great time. So please make sure you reach out to Jeffrey as soon as possible. Please don't wait until the Saturday before, like, you got an invite from me the Saturday before. Okay, so that's one reminder. Another reminder is that Jeffrey has emailed us all the forms that we need to sign for Hoyoc Day at the Big E, which, as a reminder, is Tuesday, September 17th. Um, you do need to, it's a two-sided document. They're right up there on the committee table in case you want to grab a copy before you leave tonight and just give it to Jeffrey. There's something for you to sign on the back. Flip the page over. Um, he needs them absolutely by Tuesday, the 10th. That's next Tuesday. Um, there is gonna be a special meeting to appoint the Ward One and Four School Committee vacancies. That's gonna be on October 2nd, um, here, at 6:00 p.m. Um, decided not to try and fit that in before a regular meeting because that's two candidates that we're gonna be interviewing for. So residents of those wards that are interested, um, you can send a cover letter or a letter of interest and your resume to the Personnel Office, Kelly Curran. She can answer your questions if you need them, but, um, they can be accepted up to any time, like, literally that day. Um, and of course, councilors, remember you can ultimately vote for anyone that day. Um, but obviously, if you're listening and you're considering running, um, you have about a little under a month. So get those letters in, um, so that we can distribute it to, it's both the city council and the school committee. So once again, we'll be joined by our friends at the school committee. Um, and we want to get that to everyone ahead of time. Kelly is, um, creating a, uh, shared folder that you will all have access to, that she'll start adding things in. So, um, as always, Jeffrey's been great about giving us all the information of whoever he gets resumes from. Again, so that's Words One and Four. Um, Joaime Givern's retirement party is at the Merry Go Round, September 26th, 5:00 p.m. Uh, proceeds from the tickets are gonna benefit the Merry Go Round. Everyone has an invite on their table. Um, wanted to make sure I told you about that. Um, and then a heads up that the Tourism Advisory Committee, um, was given approval by myself and the mayor, um, to meet at 4:00 p.m. for their October 15th meeting. I was, it's not something that's gonna happen all the time, but something that they needed to do, and, um, so I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that piece. Um, and. Reminder, last reminder, our next meeting is on a Wednesday, again. It's Wednesday, the September 18th. Um, so for those who love to tune in and join us, um, it's not on Tuesday this month. And I think that's it. Does anyone have anything else that they want to add for now? Oh, Senior Fest is on September 13th as well. Um, we should have all gotten a letter from Tom Reynolds. Um, so that's, uh, at the Summit View Pavilion, um, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Um, so hope to see you there. Always a fun day. Okay, Counselor Devine?
Date again on that one?
The date is September 13th.
September 13th, thank you.
Busy weekend.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, everyone. Uh, moving on. Item 23. The Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that Section 8.1.9 be amended to include the following language after the last sentence, uh, requirement to submit new technical data. Um, if the town acquires data that changes the base flood evaluation in the FEMA-mapped special flood hazard areas, the town will, within six months, notify FEMA of these changes by submitting the technical or scientific data that supports the changes. Um, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, um, this is an order, I believe, filed by Counselor Mike McGrath Smith. Um, but I have a letter from the, the Planning Board, I believe, um, where they, um, I'll just read it. Um, please be advised that the whole Planning Board at June 11th, 2024, um, discuss the above referenced tax change, request the zoning ordinance after discussion.
You're like, you sound like mom, mom.
Oh, my bad.
It's okay, I'm just letting you know, just a little.
After discussion?
Thank you.
Based on the information received during the public hearing, the board voted unanimously to recommend to the ordinance committee of the city council that the city council adopt the zoning tax change request for Section 8.1 floodplain overlay district.
I'm sure the translators will appreciate this, actually. Thank you.
This change to our zoning ordinance is essentially technical and is needed to bring our ordinance into compliance with federal regulations and the FEMA flood insurance rate map and blaze flood evaluations. The new proposal language for Section 8.1 is as follows. 8.1.9 notification of alteration. 8.1.9.8 water course alteration. In a riverine situation, the Conservation Commissioner shall notify the following of any alteration or relocation of water course. So in a sense, they said that it would make sense for us to approve, um, the language just to fall into compliance with, um, policies and rules and regulations that have been changed throughout, um, I believe, state and federally. Um, so it's recommended, it was adopted 3-0. Um, and I guess we can take a vote on it to move it forward.
So is that your motion to pass the first reading?
There you go, that's the language I was looking for. It's been a while, guys.
Also, Counselor, you have, you could be an announcer on the radio.
I've been practicing, I've been watching Kevin. I'm not gonna lie.
All right, so that was your motion to pass the first reading?
Motion to pass the first reading, yeah.
Uh, under discussion, any other comments?
Motion to pass the second reading?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, so hold on. Motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor. That was my bad.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the order be ordained.
That the passage be ordained.
That the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. Um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to make the amendments, uh, mentioned to this part of the ordinance. Bacon?
No.
Anderson Bergos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grayney?
No.
Jordan? Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy, Ron Baletti?
Yes.
Ocasio? Oh, she's, sorry, she went to the bathroom, sorry. She went to the other room. Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Eight a's, three nays. Four nays. So that doesn't pass.
I think a motion to reconsider our vote and table it to the next meeting.
Because you need nine votes, no? Yeah, okay, right, sorry.
So. Second.
So motion was made and seconded to lay the item on the table?
Reconsider our action.
Reconsider our action and lay the item on the table? Uh, all those in favor or under discussion? Counselor McGrath Smith?
Um, just because I never heard any dissent in, um, ordinance that I can remember or, or discussion here, I would just love a brief and brilliant. Uh, for those who voted no, maybe one person wants to just briefly name for the room what are the outstanding issues or questions you'd like to see answered so that if we need to pull someone in to answer those, we can into ordinance?
Okay. Can I do that? Yeah. Counselor Bacon?
I'll just, um, offer this as an editorial comment. Um, when we engage in a conversation about people voting in committee one way and changing their votes at city council meetings, votes at city council meetings, I'd be happy to enter it on all the various matters that are on our agenda tonight. Thank you.
Okeydoke.
Excuse me.
Great. So the item, the motion, sorry, Counselor Givner?
Just so I understand this clearly, I'm understanding that this is a new requirement from the state and that we needed it as an ordinance, is that correct?
That's what I understood it.
That's what I understood too as well, but...
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that because I was under the impression that this is just kind of like a vote to put into ordinance something that's required by the state anyway. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks. Oh, right. Motion to table is not debatable. So we're tabled, it's done. Great. Moving on.
Okay. Item twenty-four.
Item twenty-four.
Fun times. Wait, I gotta wait for you.
All righty. So item twenty-four is the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the City of Hoyok Tax Work Off Program for Seniors be increased from thirty to seventy slots. Furthermore, that the stipend be increased from seven fifty to one thousand. The rationale is that applicants for this program have dramatically increased. And the recommendation is that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Yes. Real quick before you say, so your twenty-four is this one for me on mine, and I'm reading it from the email. It's in twenty-five.
You know what? You're right because I was told, I knew this was gonna happen real quick. My numbers are not...
Okay.
I apologize.
I'll do twenty-five and then we make sure we don't miss twenty-four.
Hold on. Hold on, hold on.
Please, I was gonna go. Can I do this one while you look for that one?
Oh, I'm on twenty-three?
No, you're on twenty-five.
It should be on twenty-four.
So then my emails are typo. The email, I'm using the email that was sent to me as an agenda, right? So my twenty-four, my twenty-four is, if you look at it, yeah, wireless telecom is my twenty-four.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. We'll do that one. You're right. My bad. My bad. My bad. I'm gonna follow my sword on that one.
Just wanna make sure I report on the right.
You are doing great. I'm not. But let's do, yeah. So item twenty-three, apologies.
No, no, no. Twenty-four.
No. Oh. Okay. These are wrong.
Twenty-four.
Got it. Okay. Guys, lots of numbers up here. Okay. Item twenty-four is the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the zoning ordinance, section seven point eight wireless telecommunication facilities and antennas, be amended to include small wireless facilities. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. So this was another item that was on the docket for awhile. We met several different times. Counselor had different opinions. We've even, we even made amendments to some of the legal language to make sure that some of the concerns that were brought up, to the extent that we could actually address it, were actually embedded within the language. So here, it sounds like, according to the FDA, if I'm using the correct acronym, or no, FCC, I believe, right? The Communications.
FAA.
No, FAA is air. I think it's Federal Communications.
FCC.
The FCC.
You got it right.
So the FCC has an overarching policy that kind of states that no municipality can actually make a policy against allowing them to be within the communities. We've had presentations from different community members that came in and they had very respectable presentations and good arguments as to why we shouldn't have them. The only conclusion that we could come to is possibly creating or developing a list and a way of letting parent, I was gonna say parents, that's my job, no. I mean, letting residents know that where they're being placed and how they're being located, just sending them letters and notice. Aside from that, it sounded like our hands were tied. So as much as we tried to fight the hand tying, we did what we could to create a policy that kind of at least tracked the wireless facilities and allows residents to know when they go up. But any other colleagues that are with me on the committee can expand a little more, but we voted three oh to adopt it on that day.
Okay. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I don't think I've ever done this before, but I'm gonna ask the indulgence of the Chair and the Body to table this simply because I was the one that offered the amendments and we were told they passed, but I just have not gone back and done my verification relative to the final language. And so if the committee or the, if the Council is willing, I would just like to table it just so I can verify for the next meeting.
Okay. So that was a motion to lay the item on the table.
If my colleagues are so...
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
No problem. So now, item twenty-five is the Committee on Ordinance referred the tax work off program seniors be increased from thirty to seventy slots. Furthermore, that the stipend be increased from seven fifty to a thousand and recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. Appreciate Counselor Grani for filing this order and actually coming forward at the City Council. I'm at the Ordinance Committee to kind of elaborate as to reasonings why. He elaborated that, he spoke with Director at the Senior Center and that a lot of this, I believe, I think he said that there were sixty-one applicants and not enough slots at the time to be able to give the stipend. So he was asking if, or requesting that if there's any way for us to increase slots or at least try to increase the stipend for the seniors, mostly due to different increases that are being impacted within today's society economically. Some of it has to do with rising tax costs, but it also has to do with rising costs just in general with regards to inflation. We voted three oh, I believe it's three oh, yeah, to move this forward and to give the senior citizens the extra wiggle room if possible that can qualify for this program. Counselor Grani or whomever would like to expand on it, please feel free to do so.
Was that your motion to pass the first reading, though?
Second.
Okay, yeah. Pass the first reading. Motion to pass the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Under discussion, Counselor Grani?
If I may, this is something that's really necessary.
Can you just move the microphone?
We had full support of the Treasurer as well. He spoke at the meeting. And if you have any other questions, I believe the Director of the Senior Center is on Zoom, Narve is on Zoom. If you have any questions for her, I make a motion that you allow her to speak.
Second.
Does any, I mean, does anyone have any additional questions?
I think everybody's in favor, so I don't know. Okay.
Counselor Devine?
Yeah, I think this is terrific and I'm glad it's gonna be passed. My only question is, is this going back to the ones that are already doing this program now?
We have a legal acceptance of it in our packet tonight.
Because there are people already working now.
Right. And I, yeah, we have the legal acceptance of it, but I don't know if that part got discussed, if it impacts the people who are signed up now.
It's just adding.
That was not...
It's just adding.
Yeah. It's for this fiscal year.
Right. So the people who are signed up now will get that increase.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Unless I hear otherwise.
Not for yesterday, though.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. I just was curious. So this is given as a credit on property taxes for work done by seniors, correct? Okay. And is there, is there a limit or is there, is the thousand the max we can do as a city?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to pass, oh, go ahead.
Yeah. So the motion was to pass, yeah, thank you. You're right. You're good. Let me show...
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
And the motion that the passage be ordained, seconded, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to change the stipends from seven fifty to a thousand and increase from thirty to seventy slots. Clerk will call the roll.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Absolutely.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath-Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed it. Thanks, everyone. Okay. Item twenty-six. The Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the position of Chief Administrative and Financial Officer be created and added to Schedule A. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. At this last meeting with us, we had Mayor Garcia and we also had the City Treasurer, Rory Casey, with us. They were able to elaborate more with regards to the position and as well as to the structure of how they think things will, how they see things to look organizationally. Unfortunately, we don't have that in our packets now, but I'm sure we can get that to everyone on the Council. But they had presented a structure where they had the mayor at the top and then they had the CFO under and they had all the departments lined up that would work and or interact with the CFO just to better soothe or better help counselors better understand where the role will lie. This order falls in line with the idea of eventually getting rid of the Treasurer. We have been talking about this for quite some time now and I think, I mean, it went through the Council three zero. Ideally, this is something that the mayor and the Financial Department, well, the Treasurer's Office is looking towards achieving one of the goals that we're trying to achieve before we get to the actual point of the other aspect of this, which is the vote and changing the actual Treasurer position. We, or some of us are in the belief that we can try to do two things at the same time so that way we're meeting at the end of the road where we end up getting rid of the Treasurer and already have a CFO at the same time. But again, it's the will of the body. I have other colleagues that are here that were at the meeting. If you want to expand a little more as to what you saw or what you heard in the meeting at that day, feel free to expand.
All right. So that was your motion to pass the first...
Motion to pass the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Under discussion? Counselor Bacon?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, after.
Okay. And then Counselor Jordane? Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to make a couple comments and I won't go on too long. But the first comment that I want to make is that at our last meeting, we took the Treasurer vote to put it on the ballot this November and under a motion to reconsider have now sent it to a committee. So if that motion is found to be in order, which I don't believe it is because a reconsideration needs to be happening at the meeting the vote occurs on, but nonetheless, that is kicking the can down the road on the Treasurer vote, which is if nothing else is changed, to be on the ballot this November. We have not changed our vote to put that on the ballot to the voters as of this time. So that's my first point. So yes, we could do two things at the same time, but my point is that we're not. And so I'm not supportive at this time because I don't see us moving on the thing that we said two years ago we were going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jordane?
One comment before I make a rule citation here in a minute, but I'll just point out in subsection two dash two sixty-five subsection N, it says that the CFO will work with and provide guidance as needed to the City Treasurer. Nowhere in this proposal does this eliminate the position of City Treasurer. We would, obviously, we're gonna, the only proposal that's now come forward before this Council is an appointed Treasurer versus an elected Treasurer. So there's nothing on the table, there is, nobody has proposed, certainly not in writing, and there's nothing before this body that says if we adopt this, we eliminate Treasurer. So that, we're, in fact, this position says you're gonna work with the Treasurer. So...
I'm sorry if I misspoke and made that understanding where if we adopt this and, yeah, because that's not what I was, if that, that was not what I was trying to put out there.
Okay. Okay. In fairness to you, I don't, I wasn't trying to categorize your remarks as that. I'm just saying is, the point is, this is going to be in addition to all these other positions. So I am a no on that, but I will just point out that if there's been, some are trying to suggest, well, if we do this, not Counselor Rivera, but some are suggesting if we do this, then we're gonna have all these other efficiencies by eliminating other positions. I'll believe that when I see it. We don't have this. All this is, is a proposal to add another position to do what the mayor is currently paid to do and to pay this person upwards of up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, which we don't have. But having said all that, and Rule nine J says I'm required to be provided this forty-eight hours in advance. I was not, so I'm politely objecting and asking you to be tabled for this meeting, please.
And I also...
So motion was made and seconded to table? Any, no, that's it.
Can't do it.
Right? Okay. Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That item will be laid on the table. And, hold on, let me just make sure I'm not messing up the numbers. Is the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order, the DBW install handicap sign at one ninety-nine Beach Street for Pablo Gonzalez. Recommended that the order be denied at the recommendation of the Disabilities Commission. Counselor Rivera?
Yes. We got word from the Disabilities Commission that it did not qualify for, they didn't qualify for a handicap placard. So we recommend that they, we follow, we deny it and approve the Disability Commission's recommendation.
Point of order, ma'am?
Counselor Grani, point of order?
Did they give you, Counselor Rivera, did they give you any more information like why?
Yes. At the moment, they did. That was like two weeks ago. I believe it had to do with either private property or something with distance. I think it was an order that you filed, Counselor Givner.
I think it was because there was already a sign there.
No, no, no. I remember now. It was, there was already a handicap parking space on that street, so they decided that they could possibly use that same, that, so they could use that same parking space.
Hmm.
That's what, that was the understanding that I got. Like, there's already a parking space on that street.
Right. My question is, is there more than one handicap person on that street?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I know. I know. Just, I'm just...
Yeah, sure. Of course. Good question.
I mean, we could ref, we could ref, yeah.
It's needed.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So was that the, your motion to deny?
Motion, okay. Motion to deny. I never said a denial, so...
Oh, I thought you said that's it.
No, no, no. I'm saying I've never said it in a way where it has to...
Oh, go ahead. You, got it.
To pass the first reading, then?
Got it. Hot up here.
No, because we're denying. We're not putting it into ordinance.
Yeah. So we don't have to do the whole thing.
The Disability Commission's...
Okay. Accepting the recommendation of the denial from the Disabilities Commission. That's kind of what I said.
Yeah.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So moved.
And then I would entertain a motion to take up twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty as a package.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend, made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty as a package. Twenty-eight is the Committee on Ordinance referred an order that the DBW remove handicap signs and then there's a list of locations, many of them on South Summer Street because all, all of them on South Summer Street because all of the residents no longer live at those locations. Recommended that the order be adopted. Twenty-nine is an order per constituent request that a handicap parking sign be removed from twelve oh five Dwight Street. Recommend that order be adopted. And then the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order to remove the handicap sign from two oh four Oak Street for Ms. Josephine Rivera. She no longer needs it. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
So all three of these, mostly, I think so for item twenty-eight, the one with all the South Summer ones, I'd like to thank Counselor Ocasio for putting in the legwork and figuring out who actually still lives there and who doesn't with regards to all the handicap spaces that are on South Summer Street. And it's, I guess, there's a part where there's some diligence done that kind of helps alleviate the parking stresses that are on South Summer Street with regards to these parking spaces. So Counselor Ocasio took it upon herself to meet and discover who's there and who's not. And then with twenty-eight, nine, and thirty is similar removal of signs, but these are requests from constituents. One is no longer needed and another one is just requested because the person moved out and is a new owner. I think this is separate, but the similar note, Counselor Ocasio has been on a, how do you say, a campaign to try to rectify or put things in order with regards to our handicap spaces and make sure that we have a system in place and it kind of makes sense. I don't disagree. So the recommended order is adopted that we kind of remove all of these handicaps signs from the spaces that they're actually at.
Was that your motion to pass the first reading?
Yes. Yes, motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion is to pass the first reading, uh, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, under discussion, Counsel Ocasio? Just make sure you're talking into your microphone, sorry.
Okay. It took me a while, but I, I think I accomplished it. Um, and the reason, I don't have nothing against anybody that need the handicap spots, but it's taken up too many of the, um, parkings, and there's nobody, like, going to figure out who's there and who's not. And some of the, some of the parking spot with the handicap signs, they don't even be used. So, and now, what they're doing is, people are taking it upon themselves to literally remove these handicap signs. I found three, I called DPW, and they came and picked it up. So I'm like, I'm overworked with the handicaps already. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
The motion that the passage be ordained, uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to remove all these handicap signs that are no longer needed.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, with that, you have passed. Thank you. Um, and that was our updates from ordinance, thank you, ordinance committee. Alrighty, heading into finance. Item thirty-one, uh, Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of two hundred fifty thousand dollars as follows, uh, from Capital Stabilization and Sewer Stabilization, um, to Sewer Professional Services and Sewer Legal Services, recommend that the order be, uh, adopted, the motions to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counsel Devine?
We, we had a meeting, finance meeting, and this was discussed, and, um, what it was, the ad hoc committee that is dealing with the new contract for, um, I don't wanna say viola, but whenever that contract's up in a year, um, they really felt that they needed to put, put an RFP in, and that's what this money is for, to get some, uh, legal advice as well as, um, getting that, uh, RFP out.
Great, um, does any other counselors have comments, questions? Okay, so the motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the transfer.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan? Nine yeas, five knees.
Nine yeas, five knees with that.
There's, there's only thirteen people on the body.
Sorry. Eight yeas, five knees.
Okay, thank you. Uh, unfortunately, that did not pass.
Make a motion to table it.
I'd like to make a motion or reconsider.
Reconsider, lay it on the table.
For the next meeting.
Okay, we got, that's good, we're all in consensus on that. So the motion was made, uh, to, and seconded to lay the item on the table, uh, and reconsider our action, no discussion?
I will bring it up on, on Monday.
It, it, it can't, it's gonna be on the table here in, in committee.
Fine, fine.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, item thirty-two is, uh, a transfer request, um, in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, five thousand dollars from forestry tree climber to engineering professional services, uh, the motions to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading, Counsel Devine?
Yeah, this is for, um, the interim city engineer that, um, should be paid.
Okay, um, other questions or comments? Counsel Bacon?
Thank you. I'm all in favor of our engineer getting paid, but I've been trying for two months to get a tree trim that's blocking a brand-new traffic light, so I can't vote to take money out of tree work and put it in another cubby, sorry.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of this transfer.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Not in the room.
He's out of the room.
He's gone.
He's gone.
He's not coming back.
Seven yeas, five knees.
Um, with that, that did not pass. Sorry, jeez, um.
Motion to table.
Second. Motion to.
Didn't pass.
Right?
So reconsider our motion.
Okay.
Table it once again.
Okay, motion's been made to, uh, lay, reconsider and lay the item on the table, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Item.
Motion to take up thirty-three and thirty-four as a package, cuz they're going back to the auditor.
Okay, so motions were made and seconded to take item, suspend the rules and take items thirty-three and thirty-four together as a package, I'll read them briefly for you. Item thirty-three is, uh, transfer of forty thousand eight hundred dollars, um, from personnel, uh, clerk to personnel, uh, temp, seasonal help, and item, that was recommended that the order be returned to the auditor. And thirty-four is, um, a transfer of a hundred eight thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents from cannabis stabilization and, uh, to claims and damages, also recommended to return to the auditor. Counsel Devine?
It's, it is what it is.
Okay.
Just send it back to the auditor.
All right.
Motion approved.
Second.
Uh, motions were made and seconded to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-five is, um, a, that the city council hereby, uh, accept the provisions of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four student and senior safe programs, nine thousand dollars, nine thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, no match, um, and authorizes the establishment of a fund, um.
Be received and pass the first reading.
Motion to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading, Counsel Devine?
This is from the fire department, and they've been awarded, um, by the Department of Fire Services, a grant in the amount of seventy-one ninety-nine point ninety-four for the safes, uh, which means student awareness, fire education, and twenty-five ninety-nine oh four for senior safe program, and, um, that was approved. That's to the fire department.
Any other comments? All right, so the motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Uh, motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to accept this grant.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Okay, snagger. He's not here.
Twelve yeas, unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've, uh, accepted the grant. Um, item thirty-six, uh. It's filed by, jeez, filed by, um, it's the Committee on Finance, uh, a transfer of fifty-eight thousand five hundred from Planner Two to Planner One, um, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to pass the first reading.
Uh, motion to pass the first reading, Counsel Devine?
We had, uh, Aaron Vega in for this in finance, and, uh, what he is trying to do, and it, we certainly thought it was a good idea for Oped, um, to take the money from Planner Two to Planner One, and this will enable people in his department to, um, for more training. They will be able to, um, advance hopefully to, uh, Planner Two, which has a lot to do with mapping, and so, um, he thought that was a good idea to do it that way.
Okay. Anyone else? So the motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, the clerk, oh, yes, do you have?
Just a clarifying question.
Yep. Counsel McGraw Smith?
To the President, to the Chair, um, is this because there's a current vacancy, and so they're trying to hire into a different level with the hope that that person?
They are trying to hire a new person.
Then would go, get trained and get up to Planner Two.
Right.
Got it, thank you, that's it.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion's to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting, um, to approve the transfer.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
No.
Jenny Rivera, I mean, Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
He's left, and, Israel Rivera's left.
For the night, Sullivan and Izzy?
Unless they show up on, uh, Zoom.
Yeah. All right. Seven yeas, five knees.
Okay.
Can't be, maybe six-five, maybe? Think we're missing two people.
Six-five, does that sound right?
I don't think Izzy voted.
No, he was.
Oh, I thought I, oh, I think I said, is Jenny first, and so I heard that, so yes, six-five.
Okay, so with that, uh, the order does not, the transfer does not pass? Okay, item.
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven. And that is the Committee on Finance, um, accept the provisions, the City Council accept the provisions of the Greening the Gateway Cities Program Implementation Grant, one hundred forty-nine thousand six, seven hundred sixty dollars, no match, um. Uh, the recommendation is that the order be adopted, um, Counsel Devine?
Make a motion to pass the first reading.
All those in favor? Under discussion?
This is a grant that was, um, given to, um, plant trees, and, um, the, some of the conditions of the grant, that they plant trees at Jones Point, and, um, there's no match. It, um, was discussed in committee, just trying to read my notes here, and, um, it's a good grant in Jones Point area, they will get some, um, I think forty-four trees up in that area.
Okay.
And that was through conservation.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motions to pass the first, or, that was a motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Eleven yeas, unanimous vote.
Counsel Rivera, I think, yeah, he's joined on Zoom.
Twelve yeas, unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've passed it. Item thirty-eight, no wait.
Yep.
Yep, thirty-eight.
Okay. Item thirty-eight is from finance, and it is, uh, to accept the provisions of the EO EEA fiscal year twenty-five, um, uh, the city council hereby accepts the provisions, um, for one million two hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty, no match, for the, uh, Daybrook Watershed, um, the recommendation is that the order be adopted, and, uh, Counsel Devine, motion to adopt and pass the first reading?
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Give, uh, well, no, under discussion.
Yep, this is, um, it's gonna be a site planning at two Hoyok schools, Hoyok High and Sullivan School, it's a two-year grant for FY twenty-five, finalizing construction, uh, will be done in FY twenty-six, and there was a twenty-five percent match, but that's exempted, and this was also from conservation.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to accept the grant.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, unanimous vote.
Hey, with that, you've passed. Um, item thirty-nine is the Committee on Finance, uh, to whom was received an order that the city council asked the police department to provide us with an itemized budget breakdown of dollars received and expended over the last five years from the criminal seizure and forfeiture account, recommended that the order be referred to the Hoyok Police Department. Counsel Devine?
Yeah, this is what I spoke about before, um, the Chief Pratt had indicated to us that, um, this could be done, will be done at the end of the fiscal year. Then the fiscal year came, and we went on recess, and he retired, so I did speak to the current, uh, acting chief about this, and that's why it was recommended that we refer back to the Hoyok Police Department, and hopefully that will be forthcoming.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, uh, recommended that the order be referred to the police department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty is, uh, Committee on Finance, um, an order that the mayor's office please provide the city council with a list of all current host community agreements, um, from marijuana companies to our city, how much revenue we are generating annually from each of these agreements, recommended that the order be referred to the mayor. Counsel Devine?
Yeah, it's, um, that's exactly what happened in finance, um, that we would refer it to the mayor, and, um, he would come back to us with this information.
Okay, anyone else? Great, so, uh, referred to the mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Forty-two, um, Committee on Finance, uh, that the mayor and DPW finance speed humps at Laurel Street, um.
I think that was item forty-one, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're right.
Forty-one, um, is the Committee on Finance to whom was received an order that the city put out an RFP to do a study on our finances, specifically focusing on tax revenue brought in and how it is spent throughout the entire, throughout the community, um, recommended that the order be referred to the mayor. Counsel Devine?
Yeah, the, the reason being is because we, the city, we can't do RFPs, only the Mayor can do that, so that's why it was referred to the Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item forty-two, recommended, or the Committee on Finance, uh, that the Mayor and DPW finance speed humps at Laurel Street. Please see the petition, uh, approved in ordinance. Um, recommended that the order be referred to the Mayor. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, and exactly what it says. This apparently was a copy in Finance, and, um, referred to the order, the Mayor and the DPW finance speed humps at Laurel Street, and please see the petition approved in ordinance, uh, in April, uh, tenth, twenty twenty-four, and that's why it was sent to, referred to the Mayor.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Bartley?
I, I have no problem with the, with the motion. I, I think what happened here is that the, the petition went through, they supported it, they had a, we had a great meeting in ordinance, and then it's off to figure out a way to finance it. So I hope that that's was the point of this, and, and, you know, apparently we don't have any, uh, real, uh, I don't, we don't have a real opinion from the Mayor at this point, and, and that's where it rests, but I would hope that, uh, a few of that large counselors might help me out when, in talking to the Mayor, because this was really well advocated for by the residents in that area. They really came out pretty strongly at ordinance committee, and I'm hopeful that the City will find a way to provide for these in, in the budget. So I, I would say that this is, this is a fine recommendation. It really becomes the, the Mayor's, uh, decision, and hopefully we'll, we'll hear soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-three, the Committee on Finance, uh, referred an order with the pedestrian signal on South Street, still flashing yellow after two months, having an estimated repair cost of eleven thousand dollars, and DPW uses capitalization, capital stabilization funds to fix the light, and to communicate updates to seniors in residing on one towers. Uh, recommended that the order be referred to DPW, the Alarm Division, with a request for a report back. Counselor Devine?
Yep, this, we had this in committee, and I would refer to Counselor Bartley, because I've been by there, and I think the light's fixed. Whether or not it has that whistle when people want to cross, I don't know, but I did go by there, and it did look like the light was fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion the order's been complied with.
Second.
Under discussion, so that, it took half a minute.
Yeah.
And, but it was, it's a good result. So I remember how many calls that I get about, uh, it was broken. I had met on one call that, hey, it was fixed, but that, that's okay. No, it's okay. I'm just glad it was fixed, and kudos to all that did, did a great job.
Public service at its finest.
Yeah, boo hoo. It's all good. And just in a serious note, Madam President?
Yes.
Because that, that was a site pretty close to a fatality.
Yes.
And if you remember, we had two fatalities pretty near each other in terms of time in, in the city, just for crossing the street. So, um, and then one massive fatality, we all remember what happened over on Race Street with a, just a
Yeah.
massive lawsuit, like millions. So it, it's something that we need to be ever vigilant about, and I will say that came in from Springfield tonight for our meeting on Main Street. All the new speed humps? Really great. So that's, that's, uh, and, and the ones on Wester Road, but blessed with sacrament. So these are appreciated, I think, by most people, and, and hopefully will have some kind of a positive effect.
Thank you. All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item forty-four, uh, Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order with community support, order that the Law Department provide a status of pothole claims over the last ten years, along with a percentage of claims approved and denied. Recommended that the order be given, uh, leave to withdraw. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, we met on this, and Counselor Givner, um, filed a good order on that to find out why, um, and she can probably, um, answer this better than I, but, uh, they were charging people, uh, for claims, and they're no longer doing that, and that's why they gave it leave to withdraw.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so, uh, give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, forty-five is, uh, from Finance, that the Mayor, um, provides City Council with his plan to bring our structural budget deficit to zero in fiscal year twenty-five budget, including a plan that does not raise the tax levy by more than one million per year. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Uh, yeah, Counselor Bacon?
Permission of the Chair, is it okay to take these up as a package up to item fifty? Because they're all complied with.
I was gonna do that.
Okay, great. So motion to suspend the rolls and take items forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty, and I will read them briefly. Um, forty, I just read forty-five. Forty-six is, uh, that the City Council review and adopt the Mayor's proposal for the City's financial policies by ordinance. Forty-seven is, um, from the Mayor, emails providing feedback from various department heads in regards to the Financial Policies Manual. Forty-eight is, uh, an order that the City of Hoyoke Financial Policies Manual from the Division of Local Services, um, DO, Department of Revenue. Um, and forty-nine is, uh, that the attached letter from Chief David Pratt be added to the next agenda, so that it may become part of the official record and sent to Finance. And fifty? Oh, that's from DGR, but, um, the
I'll amend my motion to forty-nine.
To forty-nine. So, um, all of these orders are recommended that they have been complied with.
Yep.
Um, Counselor Devine?
That's, they, that's what it is. We had those in committee, and, um, I'm happy to say that we brought a lot of stuff out that was sitting in committee, whether it was copies or, um,
Okay.
or whatever.
And I'll second that.
And that seconded, anyone else? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We are moving right along, folks, right at nine o'clock, we have an hour before a little deadline. Um, fifty, Committee on Development Relations, Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order, uh, the Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority Summary of Activities, November twenty-second, no, sorry, November twenty-twenty-two to October twenty-twenty-three. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Givner?
Um, thank you, Madam President, so I don't have my notes from this meeting. Um, but, most of the items that we're about to go over are in the same boat as those from Finance just now. This has been complied with, the, the report was given to us, and it's pretty outdated, so we figured these, uh, these events have already taken place, um, and so we just didn't find it that important to follow up anymore with it.
Anyone else? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Fifty-one? So fifty-one, uh, motion to take fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five as a package, since they're all, um, recommended to give leave to withdraw? So I'll just briefly review those. Um, fifty-one is, uh, an order that Mary Nathan, the Disaster Program Manager for the Western Mass Red Cross, be invited in. Fifty-two is that, um, the DPW provide quotes and an acquisition, uh, acquisition plan for movable speed bumps and speed humps, um, to be paid through cannabis stabilization. Fifty-three is, um, an order that the Council invite the OPED Director and representatives from One Development Inn to talk about two sixteen Appleton Street. And fifty-four, uh, fifty-four is, uh, that DGR meet with the Soldiers Memorial Commission and the Veteran Services Director, um, to discuss the administration and maintenance of the War Memorial Building. And fifty-five is that, uh, DGR invite representatives from Hoyoke Medical to get an update on the hospital. All of these have been recommended that the order be given a leave to withdraw. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President, so fifty-two regarding the speed humps, removable speed humps, uh, most of the conversation was around what can and cannot be done with cannabis stabilization funds. Um, so as we, um, know, the CCC's regulations have changed, and we're still trying to figure out what we can and can't use those funds for, so, um, it's recommended that if we find that we can use them for things like this, we can refile orders requesting these kind of actions, so, um, that's been requested to give leave to withdraw. Um, fifty-three regarding, uh, OPED Director. Um, this, it doesn't have a date on it, I feel like this was just one of the older items in the jacket, and, um, this project, I don't remember discussing it, I feel like this was, uh, just an older item that was left in there. Does anyone else remember anything about this? Okay. Um, the Soldiers Memorial Commission, um, maintenance of the, oh, this, we had a, we've had a lot of discussions about the, the, the War Memorial Building, so a lot of different things have been happening with, like, grant funds coming in to fix things, and different types of maintenance, so, um, this was given leave to withdraw, because we don't feel like we needed a state representative to come in and talk to us about this. And last but not least, the Hoyoke Medical Center to get an update on the hospital. Um, I think we tried to, to organize something and just didn't have much luck with that, but, um, I think if we do want people to come in and give presentations, we should be a little more specific in the order and what we're requesting, so if someone wants to get an update from the, um, Hoyoke Medical Center, if they could be specific and, you know, we can invite someone in to talk about it, but, um, it's kind of a broad request, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Bartley?
I'm gonna second the motion on that, but just under discussion?
Yeah, uh, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, uh, I'll be, I'll be very brief. I, I, I think all the points are excellent. Um, it's just that when I look at these orders, at, at a certain point, they all had value. I, I don't even know who filed them, frankly, but it's, it's, it's immaterial. They were filed, I think, with good intention. I, I, I think the, and I'll happily work with the Chair if, if, if she so desires, the, the GR part of the DGR is kind of, uh, to me, it's the most fun part of that whole committee, because you have people come in, and you hear from them. So if it's, if the order is not specific to, say, somebody like the, the Executive Director's very busy, or the Chief Financial Officer, you know, Jeff is very good at reaching out to people and getting a volunteer from that organization, so we can hear more. Just, for example, with Hoyoke Medical, the, as you know, it's a community hospital, I mean, they barely make ends meet, and yet, and they're one of our largest employers in the city, so, and it's a massive asset. So it would be nice to, to hear from them once in a while, like we heard twice, if you remember, a call last year from Lynn at the mall, because you, you wanna, you wanna hear from these people, and they wanna come here, a- as it turns out. It's not just elected officials that I invited when I chaired this up, but it's, it's all these municipal and financial and business leaders, they, they definitely wanna come and, and talk to us. I, I can assure you of that. And, and they enjoy it every time they come here, because everybody really is so courteous. You know, we're not the US Senate, we just, we just wanna hear from them and ask a couple of questions. And so hopefully we'll, we'll do some more of that as, as time goes on, and I think we will, but, I mean, I, I think these were, you know, frankly, you discussed, the Chair discussed them, I think she, her summary is very good. We'll just, uh, break down some more down the, down the road.
Yeah. Sounds good. Anyone else? And this is just a friendly reminder to anyone who's a Chair, if you are setting your agenda, don't try to invite people two days before, or even a week before. It's not gonna work.
Right.
And it requires a lot of planning ahead, and so that's just a friendly reminder for everyone. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, we are moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. If we're not voting on it tonight, and it's being referred to committee, I am politely requesting that we do not discuss it. Thank you. Okay. Um, item fifty-six, filed by Counselor Jordane, uh, ordered that the school receiver and Father Albert be invited to the Joint Committee of the City Council to discuss the, um, sorry, I lost my place, to discuss the status of the school breakfast and lunch program in Hoyoke. If they cannot attend, please send the City Council a letter to us to, uh, to let us know if the concerns about the parochial schoolchildren losing their breakfast and lunch has been resolved satisfactorily, or if the matter is still unresolved from their perspective, and the children might still lose out. Please keep us posted until resolved.
If we could send this to the Joint Committee, please?
Sure. Uh, Joint Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, fifty-seven, filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, uh, ordered that a new community representative be chosen by City Council to be seated on the Community Preservation Act Committee to replace Francesca Nunez.
Send to public service?
Public service.
Public service.
Personnel to have them advertise it?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, so public service with a copy to personnel in order to advertise? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Fifty-eight is filed by myself and just me. Sorry.
Two names, though.
I do have two names, thanks, Mom and Dad. They're probably watching. Um, ordered that the City create the position of a municipal hearings officer to appear, hear appeals by offenders of the State Building Code made pursuant to MGL Chapter one forty-eight A, Section two, and that a stipend, uh, be determined for said position.
Be ordinance?
Ordinance.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I just?
Yeah.
Very brief.
Yes.
Okay, this is a very interesting order, in my humble, and is this something that was, who is our hearing officer now? That's somebody in the Law Department?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
They're not able to?
That's something we're, they, they, that we can talk more about, but I think it's sort of a, a capacity thing, but we can get into more of that.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, of course. Um, fifty, oh, wait, sorry, so send to ordinance?
Ordinance.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fifty-nine, filed by myself and Counselor Jenny Rivera, um, ordered that the City install a raised crosswalk or other appropriate alternative on Nick Cosmos Way in front of the Hoyoke Boys and Girls Club to ensure pedestrian safety for residents, kids, and staff accessing the park.
Send to the DPW and public safety?
Receive and send to DPW and public safety? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Sixty, uh, filed by myself, uh, ordered that the City Council receive the letters of resignation from school committee members, uh, Dr. Caballero and Gustavo Romero, and work to schedule a joint meeting.
Oh, so we'll receive.
Most, okay.
Receive and refer.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Uh, sixty-one, filed by Counselor Ocasio, uh, ordered to request the Forestry Department, John Tuig, to move overhanging ranches going on Capri pizzas, uh, fence and property.
Do you receive and send to the DPW?
Receive and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, sixty-two, filed by Counselor Ocasio, ordered to request the Forestry Department, um, John Tuig to move overhanging, uh,
The same one.
Oh, I did have a, a sticky note from Jeffrey on that, sorry.
Okay.
Um, that's just a duplicate. Um,
Leave to withdraw on sixty-two?
Second.
Leave to withdraw. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President, just a bit of information for those of you, some of us already know this, but years ago, the Forestry Department was in Parks and Rec, and I think it was Mayor Morse that moved it to the DPW. It's really too bad, I would have thought, it should have stayed in there, but that's why it's going to DPW.
Yeah, and Counselor Devine is right.
Yep. Used to be easy.
Yep.
All right.
Sixty-three.
Thank you.
Hardworking guy.
We're on item sixty-three. Uh, filed by Counselor Ocasio, um, order that the DPW finish paving, painting, sorry, the lines, the parking lines, uh, which we've been waiting since Terry Murphy was a City Counselor.
Where?
Which street is that?
South Summer.
South Summer?
Actually, it's South Summer, it's really all over South Hoyoke. They only did certain parts, and then finished the whole.
Just pull the mic up, I, I, I can't, I can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
What I was saying is that, um, on South Summer Street, they never put the parking lines up. on South Summer Street, they never put the parking lines up. I've been at the, since Terry Murphy had put in the order. So I've been waiting like forever, and there's a parking issue because people are taking like too much space for one car and there's nothing, and then with the, with the handicap things going on too, so it's like nowhere to park.
Do you wanna amend it to say on South Summer Street? It just doesn't say the location on this order.
Well, uh.
Or do you wanna say all of South Hoyoke?
All of South Hoyoke.
Okay.
I, I, I have spoken to Mike. I keep forgetting his last name about it, so. I told him that I want all of Hoyoke painted.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna add that in there as a note. Uh, refer to DPW?
So moved.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, sixty-four is uh filed by Counselor Ocasio that the city or landlords to fix or patch the big holes in the alley uh which are dangerous for residents and handicap equipment uh between East Street and South Bridge, also between South Summer and South Canal Street. Should that be Public Safety and Board of Health?
I was gonna say the Board of Health because they have that squad that if you tell them where you want those patches done, the Board of Health will send them a letter. Okay, I can go over it with you if you want.
So, refer to the Board of Health and DPW?
Yeah.
Does that work? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, Item sixty-five filed by Counselor Ocasio. Um, that DPW pick up and clean debris um and bricks on the sidewalk um on the corner of Adams and South Summer Street. Um, it's dangerous for residents to walk. Refer to DPW?
No, um, that been complied with.
That's been complied with?
Oh, oh, look at that.
Look at that. Comment files in order?
Because I show up and.
There you go, girl.
Just snap your fingers and it gets done. That's nice.
Teach us. Teach me. Um, okay, so that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, the next, uh filed by Counselor Ocasio, Item number sixty-six. That Police Department enforce removing vehicles with no insurance or no longer working or sitting in the same spot for months in order to make room for other people who are illegal to park. Refer to the traffic squad? Ooh.
We have one.
We. Only by ordinance. I think she was being facetious, but um we can refer this to the Police Department?
Police Department.
Police Department, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, Item sixty-six, uh order, filed by Counselor Ocasio. That um, ordered to request the MVD to come to City Council and explain what is legal and not legal for handicap signs for residents. I think there was a communication for that?
Yeah.
Um, I, I having a problem with that because some of the handicapped, they are up like in the alleys and stuff. They got those black numbers underneath and it.
Do you?
They're not legal, so then they call the cops. It's a whole mambo jumbo in South Hoyoke.
Do you want to send this to?
DPW does the signs, right? The actual physical signs?
Like installing them?
Yeah.
Do you wanna send this? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Rivera, you have your hand up?
Yeah, it just sounded that, that if it's in the alleyway or anything, that's kind of private property, to be honest. Like, anything that's on a public way, then DPW would handle. But if it's private property, then I guess the property owners would be the ones that put up whatever it is, and it could be inconsistent. But it does make sense to have the, the, the guy that does the, the officer that is like that approves, the Disability Commission, to kind of elaborate. I remember doing a session like that at Public Safety um just to give an understanding for the public, but if there needs to be a refresher, that would make sense too.
Do you wanna do that? Do you wanna send it to Public Safety?
Yeah, have them come in.
What does, what does MVD stand for? For my own?
Yeah, the what? What'd you say?
Motor vehicle?
Department, motor vehicle, okay, okay. Counselor Greeney?
Could we letter to Massachusetts Disability Commission to get a ruling on it?
With a copy to the Disability Commission? Okay, so, refer to Public Safety with a copy to the Disability Commission on Disabilities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Okay, um, Item sixty-eight filed by Counselor Jenny Rivera. Ordered that a handicap parking sign be installed for uh Daniel Canales of ninety-five Newton Street. Refer to ordinance?
Copy to Disabilities?
With a copy to the Disabilities Commission. All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Okay, sixty-nine filed by Counselor Jenny Rivera. Ordered that the City Council approve the resolution for the Certified Housing Development Incentive Program Project, including a local tax increment exemption agreement with Elliott Properties LLC for the redevelopment of one seventy-four Lyman Street into downtown market rate housing. Development and government relations?
So moved.
Alrighty, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, Item seventy filed by Counselors Bacon and Jordane. Ordered that the Treasurer, along with key people, please provide an update on progress and next steps for converting to self-insurance to provide health insurance for city employees. Uh, please also review with the City Council the calculations on how the fiscal year twenty-five insurance budget was calculated. Refer to Finance.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's gonna be on nine twenty-three at six thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, Item seventy-one was filed by Counselor Bartley. Uh, City Council established by ordinance a minimum sewer fee to be paid to the city upon the sale of any real estate closing. Currently none exists, though a five dollar fee was the norm. The present actual rate is seven dollars and fifty cents per one thousand gallons. Refer to ordinance with a copy to the Board of Public Works and legal for their input.
So moved.
Alright, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item seventy-two filed by Counselor Bartley. The Administrative Assistant add a page.
Seventy-two and seventy-three together, because it's, I was going to Jeff, I hope.
Alrighty, so Item seventy-two and seventy-three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, seventy-two is um to add a page to the city's website that highlights Hoyoke Sister Cities program. And Item seventy-three refers to uh that the Administrative Assistant organize and highlight on Hoyoke's website the honorary streets and some biographical information. Receive and adopt and send to the Administrative Assistant.
So moved.
Counselor, uh, Devine?
Um, just a friendly amendment, that that be sent to the receiver, and I'll explain why. And I checked with Counselor Jordane because he and I, um, if you combine how long we've been here, we probably know a lot more of where these signs are. And we had one, I have the David Bartley Way, the Dick Welch Way, the John Willehan Way, a new one, a Barbara Bernard Way, Joe McGivern Way, Saint Florian Way. So those, unless Kevin can think of any others.
Betty Medina.
That's, I'm getting to that. I'm getting to that. And that's what Counselor Jenny Rivera will be speaking about. In addition, all along Main Street from Jackson Street to Appleton Street on both sides are banners of many Latino leaders such as Betty Medina and others. And um Jenny Rivera tells me that Nueva Esperanza has a listing of all those banners that are up there. So the reason for my motion to bring it to the school receiver, Soto, what he could do is divide the, or have principals of uh Hoyokai, principals of Dean, divide these up in their history classes so that each child may take one of these. There's a ton of banners on Main Street. Do the research, um and then perhaps um go on Channel twelve uh and talk about whoever they have uh to look up and, and research, and also to have it on Hoyoke Media. I think the public would get a real um kick out of that and learn about people that are on those banners and that are on these.
And I, I do apologize. I didn't, I abbreviated the full order from Counselor Bartley um towards the end of that order. Um, it did ask to copy the um, send a copy to the Joint Committee on Schools, more as an FYI. Um, hoping that there could be an educational component for Hoyoke Public School students, so I think that's
Okay.
great, and it sounds like
And.
Something we all agree on here.
Nueva Esperanza has to give the information.
Yes.
Because they have all that information.
Okay, and Jeffrey also just let me know that he has reached out to DPW already to get a full list.
Okay.
Counselor Bartley, and then Counselor Jordane, and then Counselor Greeney.
I think it's all important, what the embellishment, I just want my order just to kind of go to Jeff, and I'll work with Jeff, and we'll, we'll get it organized, but Jeff can reach out to whomever he needs to uh gather information and intel, and if we can expand it, that's great. I, I just hope. I mean, some of these, sometimes we do things, Madam President, like for Elaine or for Betty. You know, so Betty has a street, has one of those street markers.
Yeah.
You mentioned it last week for Dad.
Yeah.
And then uh Marty over here, I mean, we could, Jack, we could, we could go on and on and on and on. Sue Egan.
Yeah, we could have a QR code. It could be real cool.
And, and Jeff, Jeff is so good at this stuff. Boy, I love the, I love the sound of that, because that's the modern way. You're, you're hip to that, so, so.
Millennial, yeah.
Jeff knows how to do all this stuff, so I, I think, you know, it's not like highest priority.
Yeah.
But hopefully we can, you know, build it up and see where it goes.
On your downtime.
So, and I like the thing with the banners too. We put a link on the webpage and Nueva.
Love it.
I think that makes sense.
I love it. Alright, cool. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was just gonna make one comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. And then you had, sorry.
Yeah.
Counselor Jordane, and then Counselor Greeney.
I did wanna thank Counselor Bartley for filing. I also wanna thank uh Counselor Devine for her excellent comments. Um, just pointing out that the school department does have a Hoyoke History class that also would be really cool. I know Quentin Dunne who taught that for years. Uh, I don't know if he still is, but uh he's certainly a guru of Hoyoke History, and these in particular, one of the things I would like to point out with these three sister cities is there is a lot in common between them and us. You know, I think of, when I think of Salinas, uh Puerto Rico, I think of Hector Santiago Colon, who is like our three Congressional Medal of Honor winners, is a sort of the hero of Salinas, um, who is this really valiant man who died in Vietnam when he threw himself on a grenade, and uh is from Salinas, and like Hoyoke, he um uh, you know, there's just some amazing people that have come out of Salinas, Puerto Rico. Um, Tre Lee, when I think of that city, I also think of, there have a Rose Festival that started the same year as our St. Patrick's Day Parade, which is kind of really cool, nineteen fifty-nine. And then um the city in Ukraine, Savaldiva, of which I'm probably butchering the name. They are also a city uh on a river very reminiscent of Hoyoke, uh, the Lebarica River, and um I, I think, you know, it's, it's pretty cool. Luckily for them, they're in the farthest west extremity of Ukraine, so thank God they're not getting bombed like much of the rest of Ukraine is sadly. But um, yeah, there, there's just so much great history in those sister cities that I think we could tell. Thank you.
For sure. Um, Counselor Greeney, and then Counselor Ocasio.
Yeah, I don't know if you'd be interested, Counselor Bartley, if we could reach out to Hoyoke, Colorado, too, to see if uh there are any uh
Oh, now we're cooking with fire.
There are only three Hoyokes in uh, in, in, in the, in the country.
I didn't know there was a third. Alright, Counselor Ocasio.
Also, Mr. um Fernandez from the Fernandez Restaurant, also.
Yep. Alright, great. And Izzy has a banner. He has on a banner. Alright, awesome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
We'd have to get a budget, you know, for a tour.
Yeah.
Each of the.
Yeah, exactly. I like it.
I'm sure the President will arrange for that.
Totally fine.
Yeah.
I'll get us a bus. Okay, so, Item seventy-four, um that filed by Counselor Bartley. Uh, that DPW install a protective wraparound barrier uh around the, the Hoyoke Rail Platform. Uh, receive, adopt, and refer to DPW and to Public Safety Committee for a follow-up?
Yeah, that's my motion. Can I just make a?
Yeah, of course.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I hope anyone who has interest in rail uh would join me in working with this a, a little bit more. The platform, I just, I met with a guy two weeks ago, and he's just a wealth of information from the trains in the valley, and this guy is so into it, he's unbelievable. He has so much knowledge, and he's, uh, he's the one that wanted me to go down there because he knows I, I did some work in the whatever big deal past, but um yeah, that is a rough situation because that is, um, it's littered with um litter and, and all sorts of paraphernalia. People have certainly been living there. The point is that that platform and that property is owned by the city. It's not owned by the Commonwealth. So, in order to do anything, we have to go see Carl or whomever down there, and you know, are they doing their best to maintain it? Yes. Could they do a little bit more? Hard to say. So the question becomes, at some point, Madam President, does a city need to continue to own a rail station? Does a city need to continue to own the platform or the parking lot? Many municipalities up and down the valley now are, are diversifying that. So, and one last, so it, it's expensive to do it, but somehow that's gotta be protected. It's not to hurt anybody, it's just to prevent what ultimately would be a tragedy if people are underneath there and wake up and a train rolls by and something bad happens. So, that's point one, and the last point is the gentleman I just mentioned, he is working with a lot of people, including a state rep. I had a wonderful conversation with her two weeks ago about this, and trying to do their best to expand rail service to the city. Currently Hoyoke has per day nine riders. That's a joke. That's a flat-out joke. And there's a reason for that. I don't blame Hoyoke. I don't blame, it, it's the rail system. The times are it's embarrassing how, how uh, how little it's used because it's so inconvenient. Ben is, he understands this. He wants to expand it. Pat Duffy wants to expand it, and I'm sure John would as well. So it's, it's a question of uh, you know, garnering the powers that be and starting somewhere. So, that, that's for way down the road, Madam President, but right now, let's just make it secure.
Okay, so receive, adopt, and refer to DPW and Public Safety Committee for a follow-up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, seventy-five filed by Counselor Bartley, that the Lot Department provide an update to the City Council as to the reason a twenty-twenty-two Hoyoke Police Department Cruiser with thirty thousand miles has been sitting at Marco Ford for the last twelve months. Uh, my understanding is an officer had an accident as a result of a mechanical defect, and the car was towed back to the dealer where it continues to sit, unused. Receive and refer to Lot Department and send to, send order to Public Safety for a follow-up.
We should also send this to the police chief so he can answer it.
Okay.
If he does have an answer for.
Okay.
Had Counselor Bartley checked with him.
Wow.
Okay, guys, we're doing so good.
Oh, really?
We were doing so good.
Do I have to take a slap like that?
It, you know.
I mean, really?
I mean, I, okay. Guys, we are, we're, we're doing good. We don't, no, 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 no.
Just sitting here doing my job, and I, I get a, I get a sense of slap, and I'm gonna sit here and take that? Madam President, come on, you know, I, I.
I understand. Listen, everyone, listen.
I mean, that, that deserves an apology. I won't get it, but it's, it just, it is what it is.
I really would appreciate, though, if everyone can.
Everyone was. Everyone was.
I understand.
If Dave had considered calling the chief. That's unbelievable. I file an order, the chief can.
We all can, we all understood. Okay.
I, 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 I've had enough. By the way, I'm, I'm gonna move my chair like in the far court. This, this is nonsense, Madam President.
Counselor Devine, can, can you?
There won't be an apology.
Stop, everyone. I mean, really, that was unnecessary. It was.
Disgraceful.
And also, I just wanna remind people that like, I'm here to facilitate a meeting. I can't control the way that all of you behave. And it's unfortunate that this just took that turn. It, it, no, it is, and Counselor Bartley, I, I actually understand your frustration right now, so if we can all just keep moving forward, you know, we've all been trying to, everyone's gotten along right up until that point. So, maybe all, just, let's all just, let's reflect because this is kind of ridiculous. I can't believe we just took that turn. That's really unfortunate.
I apologize to you.
That wasn't helpful either, so, thank you. Um.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm really getting sick of this, you know that?
You know what? Me too, Counselor Greeney. Is there anything that you would recommend I do that I'm not already doing?
Yeah, decorum.
I have had to do that so many times. That's enough.
It starts right here.
I'm done. I'm done. I will end this meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn if I have to.
Item seventy-eight.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.